Do we have any other speakers, Ms. Sandoval?
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. We now move to board discussion and comment. Seeing only Trustee Jones. And I want to be fair of other people, but Trustee Jones keeps being first and not seeing anyone else. So please, Trustee Jones.
Thank you. It's good to see all of you. I want to offer my congratulations to Chief Washington. I know we'll be at a swearing in for you tomorrow, and I look forward to that. It's good to see you here. I know I have opposed the MOU, and I will continue to do so based on the same reasons that I had before. I want to make clear that I do think it's important that even though I oppose this MOU and the current structure of the SRO program, I really believe that it is important for us to have a collaborative and constructive relationship with FPD. That's very important for our staff and our students and for the whole community. So I just wanted to make that clear. The concerns I have about this, I know that this came to us in July, and our board passed it. And at the time, we didn't have any input that these changes were requested by FPD. And I'm wondering what changed between then and now that we're seeing the request for these changes come to us, and we didn't hear anything in July.
Well, thank you for that. And first of all, it's an honor to be here tonight. President, Vice President, Trustees, and Superintendent, thank you for inviting us and allowing us to speak today. I truly, truly echo your remarks as far as having a collaborative relationship. This is important. Our community has spoken. This is an important program for our schools, and we're going to do everything we can to ensure that we are deploying these resources in a very responsible way. So if we back up to when this was initially brought before you, there was collaboration, there was discussions amongst the school, between the school district and the police department. However, the draft that you saw, we had not had time to bring it before our executive command team and/or our legal team to ensure we were in compliance with the law. And that's the bottom line. We have to be in compliance with the law. There are laws that prevent us from doing some of the things that were initially outlined in the first version. And those were the recommendations that we made, to get us in compliance with the law, to ensure that we're not doing anything unethical or improper by approving this MOU. So once our legal experts, as well as our executive team, had a chance to talk about the draft language that was there, that's when we made the recommendations to make those changes.
Okay. And again, I'm just concerned that something of this importance that was on our agenda and being worked on for so long before it came to us in July, that that review didn't take place before.
Well, it did. It did. But the version that was pushed forward, you can call it a miscommunication or whatever it is, it was not our belief that that was going to go before the board to be approved. So.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'm hoping that moving forward, that we don't have that kind of miscommunication again. One of the concerns that I have is in the handbook, there's a reference to a document which I think is very important from the U.S. Department of Education and the U.S. Department of Justice, which outlines how districts best practices for going about creating MOUs. And in the handbook, it says that we follow this. And this is one of the concerns I have. The first action step is in the process of creating and reviewing the MOU, that there are certain groups that should be involved in that process. And we learned in the July meeting that we had not followed this process, that the MOU had not gotten the input from juvenile justice agencies, civil rights agencies, and community stakeholder groups, which include school administrators and educators. So that didn't happen, which was one of the reasons why I voted at the time not to support the MOU, because I think if we reference a process that we say we're following, we need to follow it, and we hadn't. So I'm wondering with these changes that are being brought to us today, have these changes been reviewed by civil rights agencies, community stakeholder groups, and juvenile justice agencies, including administrators and educators? Have these changes gone before those groups? Or is this coming solely from the folks in the room?
So many of those changes that you referenced, yes, we are in the process. I don't know if we've, I don't have the list before me, but I understand the Department of Justice recommendations that you're referencing. I truly believe in those as well. Those are great recommendations. It's important to keep in mind that we have no doubt that our program aligns with many of the best practices that we see around the country. So I welcome it. In fact, recently, I proactively reached out to the NAACP for that very reason, because I wanted them to have their eyes on it. And so they have reviewed it, as I suspected. They felt like we have gone above and beyond to meet some of the concerns that the task force had and some members of our public. So, and I think we've recently reached out to a juvenile justice organization as well, and we're awaiting their review of this particular MOU. So that process is occurring to make sure that we align. But you might remember, there's five recommendations in there, so that's the first, right? The other four that's represented there, we feel like we meet and exceed those recommendations with the current program that we have. And so that's a long way to say yes. We don't shy away from that. Again, I have the utmost confidence in this program, and I welcome any perspective that might add to the safety, security of our students, and ensuring that we're considering their needs and protections as well.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I'm glad we're seeking the input from those organizations. I'm concerned that the process, it says requiring involvement of school administrators and educators and community stakeholders, which I take to mean parents. And I'm not sure we had the involvement of those groups in this particular revision that we're seeing, and I think that's important. So I'm concerned that that hasn't happened here.
Can I just talk on that just one second? So the community stakeholder piece, and it's just an interpretation of the terms. I do have a community advisory group in which I, early on, presented this MOU and the policy to that group, because those are people that represent our community. And so if your preference was to have some sort of group that involved the parents, then I would have liked to have heard that a little bit earlier in the process, and we could have made sure that we agreed on what that term meant.
Right. And I think this is where, these are issues that I raised in July, that these community, these organizations and community groups, including the admins, educators, community stakeholders, meaning parents, should be involved. That's something I raised in July. So anytime I see a revision to the MOU coming to us, I'm expecting to see the involvement of all of those groups, as the DOJ and DOE document outlines should happen and that we say we're following. Obviously, I want to be in compliance with the law, whatever laws apply. One of the concerns I have is seeing this come back to us right now with concerns that address the Police Officer Bill of Rights, which is a fine thing for us to address, but absent pieces that relate to protections for students that I think need to be added, that I raised in July. We have a lot of things outlined in the handbook that go to student rights, but they're not in the MOU. And the MOU is the only thing that both entities sign. So that's the document that's binding on both parties. So I want to see those protections for students, that some of which are outlined in the handbook, added to the MOU so that it's clear and binding on both parties. And I'm not sure, I'm not seeing that reflected here. And I'm uncomfortable taking action to address one part of a problem that we have, which is addressing the Police Officer Bill of Rights, things that need to be in, without also addressing parts of what go to student rights that I feel should be embedded into the MOU.
Okay, yeah, I understand your point. But just like, I think the handbook mentions the Department of Justice recommendations, is right. That's not necessarily binding as well. That's not in the MOU, correct? So, I mean, it's, we can, we can go back and forth whether, you know, things that are in the handbook should go in the MOU or vice versa. But the MOU, I think we all agree that we want to buy, by not only supporting the handbook and, I think, a great document that helps guide our decisions and how we operate, but also creating an MOU that is, that is, has all of those specifics in there that really, doesn't really outline the relationship and the agreement between the two parties. And so I just want to be clear, because it seems like we flop back and forth between the MOU and the handbook. And, you know, I just need to get some clarity on what it is that you want to happen. Do you want the handbook to be the MOU? Or do you want an MOU that basically outlines the terms and agreements to, between the city and the district?
And, you know, I can only speak for myself. One of the issues that I raised in July is I had been looking at model MOUs with, between districts and SROs. And some of the models and some of the actual MOUs that I've seen put into place are more along the lines of what I've said, is that the MOU actually encompasses everything. And that is a model that I think that our board should be following. When we passed this in July, the board discussion was that there was sentiment among trustees that it was a living document that we could amend and change. And there was, I think, some agreement that there were some improvements that we need to see from it, or we would like to see from it. And I'm concerned that what we're seeing here in this MOU is addressing some very specific issues that relate to the Police Officer Bill of Rights, without addressing the other issues that trustees had at the time that we wanted to see. So I'm uncomfortable with this coming to us right now without addressing issues more comprehensively. I personally would like to see this tabled and come back to us later. I don't know if that's a possibility, but I really think we need to look at the MOU more holistically and not only address issues related to Police Officer Bill of Rights, but these other issues as well. And also get the involvement of the whole cadre of groups and stakeholders that are mentioned as being part of best practices.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand. The first thing is that although I know you've done a lot of research on MOUs across the country or across the region, but what I think we developed is something that works best for Fremont. And it always, it's not one size fits all. And so the conversations that we've had over the last several months is with that objective. Our city, this school district, is different than many. And in fact, people look to us to try to mimic what we're doing here in Fremont. So although there might be MOUs that you feel are very beneficial to us to consider, and we will consider those, and we have considered those, we tried to build a program on what works for this particular community and the interests of the district. I would also add that I'm not going to accept the fact that we're just changing something that has to do with the Police Officers' Bill of Rights. That is not accurate. Since July or the summer, we have gone above and beyond to make adjustments to how we operate, our policies, our procedures, our expectations, ensuring that our officers are well-trained. You will not find another SRO program that has the comprehensive training program that we have put our officers through, whether it's tolerance, cultural diversity, de-escalation, you name it. And we can go down the list if we want, but no, I'm not going to accept that we just made the adjustment to the Police Officers' Bill of Rights. We complied with the law.
I appreciate that.
But hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm not quite done. We have to comply with the law. There's no debate there. So the adjustments that you're accusing us of making is necessary. So I don't even know why.
I'm not disputing the need for these adjustments. And I'm not disputing that you have made changes in the program that reflect better practices. What I'm seeing in the MOU, the changes to the MOU, are reflective of what we need to accommodate in terms of the Police Officer Bill of Rights. There are other things that I think should be included in the MOU that are maybe part of our new practices, but still aren't written into the MOU that should be in the MOU. So, you know, I appreciate all the work to improve the program. That I don't dispute. What I want to see is some of those things embedded into the MOU.
Or our policies and procedures, because we're bound by those as well. So that's my point, is that we keep flopping back between the handbook, the MOU. The MOU is a document that is an agreement between the two entities.
Right.
Our policies and procedures, we are bound by those as well, and I want the public to understand that as well. We follow policy and procedure. So if we put something in policy or procedure that diversion is our primary option whenever we encounter a kid who has committed a crime, then that's our policy. And if we don't follow that policy, there will be accountability. So I'm not, I'm not clear where, we can't, we can't embed all of our policies and procedures in an MOU. It's just not practical, and it's just not possible.
We can embed more of them into our MOU.
Can I just ask, because you keep going back and forth. Can I just ask?
I'm a.
No, I just, can we just hear from Diane? What are these things that you feel need to be added? You keep saying there's more things that need to be added. Let's figure out what those are.
I provided documents to everybody, I sent them to everybody, showing a model MOU that I thought we should adopt more components of, not the entire thing, but components of it. So, you know, that was a long document, and I don't have it with me right here. But one of the things that I would like to see added to this document, and it is in response to the spirit of SB 203. And what SB 203 recognizes is that students and young people do not have the same cognitive development and maturity the adults do. And that we, that when students are involved with the criminal justice system, they're more than twice as likely to drop out of high school. That we really need to look to protecting our students and making sure they have proper guidance when they are engaging with the criminal justice system. And while I know we follow the letter of the law in terms of how we handle custodial or non-custodial interviews, I think it is very important, and if you read SB 203, the spirit of that law is to make sure when students have interactions with the criminal justice system, that they have access to an attorney. And I know that if we have a formal custodial interview, I'm sure we follow that. But there are times when we have had students cited by SROs, and I haven't been able to get an answer to this question, but I suspect arrested by SROs, when I've not been given any evidence, even though I've asked for it, that students have had access to an attorney. And I know we're following the letter of the law, but are we following the spirit of the law? I want to make sure our students, when they are cited by SROs or arrested by SROs, have been given access to an attorney so that they understand and have some guidance for making sure that that experience ends up being productive for them. I don't want to see our students dropping out. I want to see our students who, in some cases rightfully, are cited or arrested by police. I want them having that access to the attorney that according to SB 203, they can't waive. And so when I have asked over the course of the years, have any of our students who have been arrested or cited by police ever been given access to an attorney? Nobody can answer that question for me, which has me concerned. I want to make sure that in the MOU is embedded language that says if students are being, if there's a potential, a high likelihood that a student is going to be cited by an SRO or arrested by an SRO, that they are given access to an attorney, whether or not that interview or questioning process is custodial. Because I don't think our students understand what constitutes a custodial or non-custodial interview. They're naive in that way. And unless we explicitly tell them, they don't know. They don't know that they have a right to an attorney without somebody explicitly telling them and having real clarity about whether or not their interactions with an SRO or FPD are custodial or not. So I, my goal here is to make sure that our students are handled appropriately and that because they're juveniles and they lack sophistication and maturity and some cognitive maturity that doesn't happen until adulthood, that they have the guidance and interactions with an attorney so that they, so the process is a productive one for them, and we see them handled in a way that increases their likelihood that they're going to stick with school and actually be, have a reform process, rather than a process that ends them up with a much longer engagement with criminal justice, incarceration, and dropping out of school. Those are my intentions.
Yeah.
And if I just may interject, this has been a 20-minute engagement. Certainly want to allow you to respond, and then we're going to go to other board members, and we can come back to Trustee Jones, so everybody has an opportunity. And Chief, after you explain, if you could also introduce those people with you.
I'm sorry, yeah, I do apologize, and I will, because I'm going to have Lieutenant Tang talk a little bit more about this. So I appreciate the passion that you have. I think we're talking the same language. Because really, the law is the law. So whether you put it in the MOU or not, we have to follow the law. So you can put 203 in the MOU, wherever you want to put it, but the law is going to trump the MOU every single time. And so I agree with you. You brought up maybe a great idea. Let's have our officers come in and educate our officers about, the students about their rights. We don't, we don't frown upon that at all. We can put out something, we can have someone come and engage with the students and let them know, and the parents, their rights. The reason why I'm confident in saying that is because we have, we don't do anything improper. So I want the students to know that they have their rights. So I'll let Lieutenant Tang talk about kind of the technicalities and, you know, to your own statement, you know, you made some assumptions about what happens. And really, maybe Lieutenant Tang can clarify what the law is and our responsibility as a police department and a professional law enforcement agency to ensure that the rights of these students are protected. Because, see, we can get in a lot of trouble if we don't do that. So it's not in my interest at all to trample on anyone's rights, because we're a constitutional police department, and we want to ensure. And to your point with the spirit of the law, yes, of course. That's why I directed the staff when I took over as chief that our primary objective, if we can, unless it's a major crime, is we're going to utilize a diversion system. And we've had a lot of success with that. So we're talking, we have the same interest. And that's what's frustrating for me, because we're talking about our students and doing the best thing for our kids. And that's where we should have our passions. But I'm going to introduce Lieutenant Tang. He oversees our special operations division and oversees the SRO program as the manager. And then we have Sergeant Tang, Eric, and then Calvin, who is the SRO supervisor, who ensures that all of our policies and procedures are being followed by the SRO. So, but I'll let Lieutenant Tang talk a little bit more about the custodial situation and 203.
Calvin and I are not related. He's just, he's the smarter Tang, but we're not related at all. So I think, like the chief said, we're speaking the exact same language. Senate Bill 203 says that if a juvenile is under arrest, if they're in custody, or what people miss is that if they believe that they're in custody, for whatever reason, they're detained by a police officer, they're in an office, and they're around a police officer, and they believe that they're not free to leave, we have to read them their rights. They have to be able to speak to an attorney, and they have to make contact with the attorney. And then they have to waive their right to actually speak to us. And so most of the time, the attorneys tell them, don't talk to the officers. There are times where, you know, they really are innocent, it was their twin brother, and they say, you should probably talk to the cops, because this is in your best interest. But we can't, there is no way of bypassing that. It's a crime for us to bypass that. So you're concerned that we might be following the spirit of, that is a letter of the law guideline for us. It's not a guideline. We have to, because no police officer is going to risk their job of committing a crime for a juvenile that's committed a crime that we have to interview. So that is done every single time. Now, there are times where we make arrests or we issue citations where we don't need to interview them. So we, you know, maybe the kid has a gun, he's holding a gun in his hand, and we make the arrest. I don't need to interview that juvenile. So therefore, we can make the arrest without interviewing them. They would not have the right to an attorney at that point, because we're not talking to them. There are many citations where we don't need to talk to anybody for it. So in those situations, we may not read them their rights, but we're also not questioning them. So, but whenever there is any type of situation, and we call it, the legal definition is a de facto arrest, that in their mind, they think they're arrested, even though they really aren't, or they think that they're detained, even though they're not. As long as they believe that they are, we have to read them their rights. Now, you wonder, is there checks and balances? We can tell you one thing or not. All this, most of our contacts are recorded by body camera. When we write a police report and we send it for charging, like to juvenile probation. So with juveniles, it doesn't go to the district attorney's office first. It goes to juvenile probation first. And even though not related, both of us used to be juvenile probation officers here in Alameda County before we became police officers, so we know the process very well. So we write a report, we recommend that it gets charged. Juvenile probation, who really is, you know, they're a restorative practice, they're a correction agency, they're looking at the best interests of the juvenile, saying, all right, do we support this case being charged? And if so, then they send it to the juvenile district attorney's office. Juvenile probation looks at our report, a public defender will look at that report also. If it is not in the report that we mirandize this juvenile properly, that case is going to get tossed. If it shows that we violated the rights, now we're going to be looked at as a suspect. So there is no reason for us not to follow this. So juvenile probation is the first checks and balances, if that's what you're concerned with. From there, when they recommend that it does get charged, now it goes to the juvenile DA's office. They now look at it, and they look to make sure that we followed all the rules. They look at body camera, I wouldn't say all the time, but at some point, if it actually goes before a judge, they're going to play these videos of us. And if we're not following the law, again, we are now a suspect. We committed a crime. So I think that maybe your concerns are not based on what's practical, what actually happens on the streets, because we have to. If we don't follow the law in this situation with Senate Bill 203, we've committed a crime ourselves. So I don't know if necessarily with the MOU, you know, like the chief said, the law supersedes the MOU. We're going to follow the law, because if we don't, we're going to get in trouble. The MOU is secondary, because this is a criminal issue if we don't follow the law. So you have any questions on how that works? There's just no, there's no reason for us not to follow that.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate those clarifications. I would like to see more of that written into the MOU as are done in MOUs and other places. I just, I think those clarifications and making sure that parents are present for questioning or have the ability to be present should be written into the MOU. I just think there are some protections that we could afford our students that should be written into the MOU that currently aren't, and I would like to see that happen.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
I just wanted to go over a couple of things. Thank you, Trustee Jones, for the comments, and for the representatives from the police department for being here. What we did in bringing this forward is we, I understand the concern about when you see a revision, you want to see if we've done what was asked previously. We are operating, and by we, I'm meaning the school district staff, myself, under the prior direction, which was the approval of the documents and to engage with stakeholder groups and bring back to the board in January of 2022 those changes, feedback from the groups, and bring it for discussion there, along with our data reporting that's called for within the handbook. And so we are still planning for that presentation in January of 2022. And as the chief shared, the PD has been very active in gaining perspectives from outside agencies on our MOU and our documents. And so we'll continue to make sure that we're aligned with that goal and that outcome. The language that perhaps you're referencing, Trustee Jones, I'm sure you're aware of this, but it does exist within our handbook on page seven. It expressly calls out the assembly bill, the fact that the rights cannot be waived, the right to an attorney. And so we do have language addressing that within our documents. And I understand the concern about whether they're following in the handbook or the MOU, but I just wanted to make sure that the community and everybody knew that that language was there. It was an important focus for us. Where it lands in the end of the discussion, when we look at other revisions, is something that I think we can discuss. But it was critically important for us to make sure that was in our documents in the first run. And appreciate the chief's remarks. We did review where we had some gaps in our communication and through the change in leadership at their time and the fact that it was summer in our time, and we recognize that this is something we could have captured more accurately the first time around. And I think we're modeling very successful collaboration since that point forward.
And so I'm wondering, you know, I hear that some of the language is in the handbook, and I see it there, and I think it's good. And I, what I've said is I would like to see it in the MOU, because that's the document that is signed by both parties. If that isn't something that's going to happen, which I'm feeling like it isn't, at least not now, is it possible to amend the handbook so that it is signed by both parties? So that there is clear, clear signed agreement on the part of both parties for everything that's in the handbook and everything that's in the MOU? Is that something that is a possibility?
Well, that handbook is not a binding document between the two entities. That's the challenge for me, is that we're not the employees of the district, and the district are not the employees of us. So how do we reconcile if we sign one document with things that we don't have any, you know? But I am, I am open to the idea. but, but I am, I am open to the idea of if it's not already in our policy, we can put it in our internal policy because then I have some ability to act on it. But, but again, our internal policy is at a lower level. The state law, the officers have to follow the law. That's the ultimate policy. So wherever it resides, again, all it's just going to do is reference back to the law. And so, so I, I mean, we can go round and round about where it should sit, but I, I'm just not understanding the emphasis that you're placing on where it actually lands. Because to me, as a law enforcement officer, I've swore to uphold the constitution of not only the United States, but the state of California and all the laws that govern us. So that, that, that supersedes everything.
I'm, I'm going to go ahead and move to other board members. We'll go right down the line. Trustee Prasad.
Well, congratulations, Chief Washington.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you tomorrow in your inauguration. I've been a partner with SROs for a long time as my, as a parent and a PFA president at mission a long time ago. And even over the last year and a half of coming back into the school board, into the school system, I've been a supporter. So now, having said that, I mean, I, I do express disappointment that when a document of this magnitude came to us, it should not have had such a major error in it. So it's, it's an omission we, we move forward. So from my perspective, I mean, today we talk about SB 203 and then tomorrow it will be SB 405 and 906, whatever it might be. If we try to, duplication of information is usually bad, right? If 203 is superseded by something else, then I don't expect all the SRO MOUs in California to be amended just because the laws changed. So, so I agree that laws are there and MOUs are subservient to those. So I don't necessarily want them to, to be incorporated here. But I do, I do want to, I was like superintendent mentioned, I'm looking forward to the first evaluation in January, right? So many points that trustee Jones made are correct. So how many of these interviews happened? And, and the data that she's looking for, was an attorney present in 100% of those? Or was, was the right waived? Will that be part of the report or not? I'd say it should be, right? So, so let's, let's capture the concerns. I mean, concerns are real. So let's make sure that as we are tracking, we take care of all the concerns that the community has brought up over time. Personally, I feel this is an indispensable part of our, of Fremont and the partnership between FPD and FUSD needs to continue and prosper or flourish to make, make it such that none of our kids end up in the juvenile system. And so a significant part of what I used to do in the past was education and you alluded to that too. So we should continue to, to educate our students, our parents and the community on, on various, various different dos and don'ts, right? And that way, that way as a community, we'll all, all rise up above. And we see gang activity has gone up in Fremont. I'm sure you are challenged over there too. So we, we don't want any of that to percolate into FUSD and we look forward to partnering with you further on that.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. I'm actually going to allow sergeant Tang to talk about some of the measures that you just talked about capturing the data. That was important to us. That was something that we, we heard loud and clear from some of the concerns that, hey, what are some of the data? What are you capturing? How many times are we contacting students and issuing citations and arrests and all those other sorts of things? And we've even taken it further. How many times are we rendering medical aid? How many times are we responding to critical incidents? So that at the end of the school year or the semester, we can come back and provide that information so that you can see what your SROs are doing day in and day out. You can scrutinize the data. You can look at it, take it apart, see if there's any adjustments that need to be made as far as policy, procedures or concerns. We look forward to that. We look forward to sharing that information with our community and all of you. Because it's in our opportunity to really help explain what it is that the SROs do and then make some adjustments, some reasonable adjustments if, if needed. But I'll let sergeant Tang talk a little bit about what he's implemented as a sergeant overseeing the unit.
Good evening, board. Once again, to introduce myself, my name is Sergeant Calvin Tang and I'm the supervisor for the SRO unit right now. So the day-to-day operations of this unit go through me and I supervise six school resource officers. Like lieutenant Tang has said, my background is from the probation side. So I started off my career as a juvenile probation officer. And the goal of probation has always been reunification of the family. That is the primary goal of probation is to bring a child or youthful offender back to the family. That's something that has stuck with me becoming a police officer. While I'm a sergeant, I'm also, I used to actually be a school resource officer. I was the school resource officer at American High. So I know the balance between working within a school and then also being a law enforcement officer as well. Just to go back to trustee Jones, everything that she said is absolutely true in terms of the development of the juvenile brain and youthful offenders and youth in general. In terms of the development of the frontal lobe, takes until at least 25 to 26 years old. That is a fact. She is absolutely correct. And there is no person better than I in terms of making sure that we're not only protecting victims of crimes within the school districts, but that we're also advocating for the youthful offenders too. Because it's ultimately about, once again, reunification with the family, getting them resources and ultimately finding what we need to do collaboratively with the school, not just from a law enforcement perspective. So trustee Jones, this is my first time actually meeting you. I just want to say thank you because I think that what some of the things that you say are absolutely correct. To speak to trustee Prasad, the amount of accounting that we're doing is, is momentous right now. We are literally tracking everything that we're doing. And this is in the form of the, the quality and the quantity of contacts that we have with our students in terms of the criminal investigations that are occurring. We're even tracking in terms of mental health, in terms of 5150s, which is when a student is placed on a mental health evaluation. And then we're still looking at trends to see which schools or which areas are encountering more and then seeing what we can do to collaborate with our youth and family services and then other resources too. There is no person more excited to present to you in January our numbers than me. It is literally something that I've been working on every day as, as the supervisor. And once again, to go over with what trustee Jones said, it's, hey, are we, are we making sure that youthful offenders are getting everything that they need that is required to them, that is afforded to them by the law and the constitution? Yes, that is happening because I am literally monitoring everything that is going on. My team have, all have body worn cameras. Any criminal investigations in terms of that's authored as a report, they all go through me. And our emphasis is diversion. Our emphasis is actually enhancing our diversion program. Some of the things that we are doing is we're actually working with Community Works, which is a restorative justice program that actually has an exclusive partnership with the Alameda County District Attorney's Office. Community Works has been working with the San Francisco District Attorney's Office for quite some time. We're currently in the process of hammering out our MOU with them to see how we can refer youthful offenders to restorative conferencing. That's in addition to our, our very popular and very successful program within the city of Fremont with Youth and Family Services. Diversion is what my officers want to advocate. And once the report is submitted to me for approval as a supervisor, I also have the authority to refer the matter to diversion or not as well, depending on the circumstances, depending on a youthful offender's background in terms of whether or not they're on probation. All those things are considered. More importantly, all those things are accounted for. So once again, in January, at the reporting that we have in January, those are items and material that you'll receive that will give you the statistics and show all the things that we've been doing. Lastly, the type of training that we've been doing has been intensive. So the recognition of adverse childhood experiences, trauma-informed practices, those are all have been included before the start of the school year. We've done LGBTQ advocacy courses as well, more mental health courses as well. And some of the things that the chief and lieutenant Tang has emphasized is also the de-escalation aspect of it too. Once again, to emphasize, each training class, the amount of time, the instructor, the materials have all been included in terms of our historical preservation of all the things that we're doing. What we're most excited about though, is the collaboration that we're doing with the school district. Prior to the school year, we've had our SROs actually train with the teachers here at the district on trauma-informed practices, on adverse childhood experiences. So we're now incorporating our officers into district-wide training. And in reverse, we've also put together a training or coordinated training on de-escalation that we hosted here at the school district, I think it was three or four weeks ago, in which administrators, site administrators and our SROs, once again, training together in, in unison. So I think when we talk about that collaboration and the stakeholders from the community, I think we're doing it already. And I think, once again, from a policy perspective, which I'm not necessarily included in, those are the things that are happening daily that we're doing. My relationship with Greg Bailey, who's our director of student support services, my direct connection to CJ. They answer the phone immediately and when they call me, I answer that phone immediately. And I think the quality of that collaboration that we talk about all the time is when we face crises. And we faced our first one this year with an incident at Kennedy. While we're not going to go into the details of the investigation, the response, the immediate response from the district, from my team, was within minutes. And we had set up a unified response to how we were going to keep our communities safe. And I think it highlighted how it works. So to say a long thing, but just to make it brief, I think we've, we've done some excellent things. Our team and the team that I supervise are very open to suggestions. But it's a work in progress because working within the community and working within the school district is a working project. It's a living document and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, trustee Prasad.
One more comment. So one of the things that, that we've heard from the community is kids are intimidated by seeing an officer, an armed officer on campus. My personal experience has been that SROs become an integral part of, of the campus and they are, we, I've seen students use them as sounding boards, joking around with them during games, after-school games. And I mean, if a child is alone at the bus stop, I've seen the SRO stay there for a long time until the next bus arrives. So there are, there's so many benefits, so I want to thank you for that. And I'd like to also make a motion to approve before I hand the mic to it.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by trustee Prasad and a second by trustee Campbell. Trustee Zhang.
So I appreciate that trustee Jones asked all these questions because she's very passionate and so are we. But also at the same time, I mean, you know, you gave us thorough answers and I actually, during our conversation, I learned that how much you have put into the program and how many programs you have gone through with, with the SRO on campus. So I feel like we are indeed on the same page. We are all looking for the same goal, which is student safety, health, and also the collaboration among a police officer and FUSD. I think overall, it's, it's a, it's a great start. I mean, we are really, I think I would like to see you to come to talk to the community and also give us the report. You said you would go on January 1st of January to give us an update. I mean, can we do this every, twice a year? So that's also a case for community to know that, you know, how much you have changed the, 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 the school district for the better. And also if they have questions, they can, you know, ask you. So in that way, we can really, you know, move our relationship for the better and so that, you know, the student may not see SRO as, you know, scary or dangerous and they see you as a protection, as, as educator to help them, to, to move them to the right direction. So I would, yes. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. And, and those are, those are some of the ideas that, you know, we can certainly go back and talk about because transparency is something that I, I think is a benefit to us. Part of the reason that I think we had to kind of stumble our way through some of these adjustments, and there are good suggestions. Full transparency, we are better as an SRO program today than we were last year and the year before. We are. And so we have to take credit for that, right? And we will continue to evolve and get better as the years go on. But to your point, we have, we had to start somewhere and I think we've moved the needle quite a bit in the right direction. Can we always improve? Absolutely. But those ideas, those are the type of things that we can certainly bring, take back and we're open to having that dialogue moving forward. So, thank you.
Trustee Campbell.
Oh, okay. Oh my. Trustee Jones, I do appreciate your passion. Everybody can hear it and see it and recognize it. And trustee Zhang, I agree with you, we're all passionate about this because it's not just their kids, they're our kids. And, and we as the adults are responsible for their care. And I really do appreciate as I sit here and listen to you, I've been taking some notes and listening very carefully. And what I'm hearing is that we are responding to the environment. We're recognizing that there is a shift in the way that, in which we need to respond to our students, respond to our parents, respond to our colleagues, and we're shifting and we're moving in that direction. I'm hearing things like trauma-informed practices coming from the police department. You would hear that coming from the school district or hospital or, or someone, someone else. But I'm hearing this language of what's happening in the environment coming from the police department and I'm very impressed. I'm hearing ACE, adverse childhood experiences. I worked for a healthcare center, I did a symposium on adverse childhood experiences. I would expect to hear that from nurses and doctors and, and people in my environment, but I'm hearing that from the police department. So that I am very, very impressed with. I'm also hearing this level of collaboration and this intensity around being collaborative and helping us solve some very complex problems and, and understanding that we have to go by the law. That's what we sit here and do. We make policies and procedures, that's what the governing board is. And I respect the fact that that's where, where you, where you have to turn. You have to open up the book and you have to figure out where the law is and you have to follow it and, and respect the rights of the children and their families. And so I'm hearing that. I also heard that you're very interested in helping parents and students understand their rights. They don't necessarily have to be on a piece of paper, but will be face to face and that you're willing to actually do that. So I appreciate what, what, what you're doing. I understand that this first six months, we're trying to iron out all the kinks. We may not get it right in this first six months because this is when the agreement started. This is where we accepted the task force recommendations. This is how we're moving towards implementing some of those recommendations. And like you said, they're really good recommendations and nobody can argue that. But we, it takes time for it to be fully implemented and I get that. So I appreciate all that you're doing and I'd like us to continue to work together to ensure the safety of our students and our staff and our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Student board member Domia, would you like to, any comments?
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'll make my comments brief. Obviously want to thank you for taking this up to another level, not just in what you're doing, but informing the public. I think a lot of times, and you were kind of alluding to it earlier, perception is reality. If people believe something is true, they, they tend to continue to believe it's true until it's proven otherwise. So I really see a, a commitment on your part, not only in the actions you've already done, but in public to, to make all the comments and to share with the public how well-prepared you are. I appreciate that. I appreciate the outreach that you've done with the NAACP and other groups who have been, who have given you positive feedback on what we have in front of us on the table. I think that's fantastic. I think that people don't realize, unless they're impacted by it, the growing resurgence in gang activity. And without a presence in the schools to be able to deter that, I think is not doing us any favors at all. We have a history of being able to take people who go to some of our high schools and are active gang members to not engage in that gang activity at schools. There's not too many school districts that can say that. And part of it is because the activity that we've had with the, with the police department over the years and the SRO program particularly. We talk about diversion and I've said that's the main reason why I've been supportive of this program all along. We're talking about citations, we're talking about arrests, but the vast majority of information that I've seen in my experience over 20 years as, you know, 30 years as a parent, 20 years on the board, is that there are so many SROs who engage the students and they never get into the system because they're kind of taken aside and told that they're right on the cusp of something really bad in their life and we're going to essentially give you a second chance to the betterment of everybody. Nothing ever goes on their record. Nothing ever goes to start them in the criminal justice system. And I think your background as juvenile probation officers really sensitizes you to what the problems are because you're seeing it day-to-day, you're seeing how it impacts families and you're seeing the devastation of a child who gets into the criminal justice system early, how that can devastate the whole family, not just the child, and we don't think about that. And it's encouraging to hear that you're speaking that when you do have the opportunity and you, and the obligation, let's say in some case where you don't have a choice, where a child is entered into the system to start, you're giving that child all kinds of opportunities to correct their behavior and you're working with them all the time. The top priority is to give that child their life back and to keep that family from being broken up because of it. And we can all relate to seeing how that has happened and for whatever reason, the reasons don't really matter. What matters is how we're trying to, how we're trying to solve it. So I appreciate the encouragement you've taken from the community to meet this head-on and come up with a solution that addresses the community's concerns while at the same time assures us that the job you're doing is of the highest professional caliber and quality. And I don't think that can, that we can go too far without saying that because it's important to reinforce that over and over and over again. I think that you've taken to heart things that you've disagreed with, but you've been very sensitive to why they've been brought up and you've addressed those. And I think that's extremely important. We're looking at an evaluation process that allows us all to reevaluate and to look and to see how we can make improvements and also to look at what's working. We're probably going to see a lot of information that comes forward and we're going to see a lot of information there that shows positive interactions. And that's what we're looking for too, not just to prevent negative interactions or to have negative interactions having consequences, but to reinforce all those positive interactions. So I think that's, it's just extremely important that we are able to move forward. And I appreciate your time and effort. I unfortunately will not be able to be at your swearing-in tomorrow because I have an obligation with the ROP, which I can't get, I'm on their board so I can't get out of it.
I forgive you.
But I would be there because I think that to step up at this, what's that?
I'll be there.
Okay, okay. This was all meant so that Trustee Crosby could reinforce that she was going to be there. But, hey, Trustee Campbell, like I say, don't make a mistake. I've heard 20 mistakes from other people up here. I know it's been criticized for, but it's okay. I've got a thick skin.
We look alike.
We look, you mean you and me? No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. So I just want to thank you again very, very much for how you've handled this situation and how you've brought it forward. You've turned it around to make this a very positive experience, possibly the most advanced and positive SRO program in the country. We very well could be, could be onto something like that. So I think all these different engagements that we've had over this year has produced a situation where the best interests of our students and the best interests of our community are truly being reflected in the conversation we're having now. So thank you very much.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. And I just want to emphasize again, you know, it's been because of CJ's leadership, my staff, that have really been responsive to everything that's going on. And you're absolutely right. What you all have done, as well as our community and parents, you've challenged us to be better. And we've accepted that challenge and we've responded to that challenge. So when we are recognized as the best practice SRO program in the nation, you should take a bow because you helped create that.
And just really quickly, I just wanted to acknowledge that I see improvement and I very much appreciate your time and the explanations that you've given. That's very valuable. Unfortunately, I'm still going to be voting no because I do believe that there are more significant improvements that we could make to the MOU. And I'll be voting no, but I appreciate the improvements and I'm looking forward to January and those reports and thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you and much respect. Much respect. Thank you.
So we have a motion by Trustee Prasad and a second by Trustee Campbell to authorize the superintendent to finalize the revised MOU at the City of Fremont for School Resource Officers for Services, July 2021 to June 30th, 2023, and approve the revised FUSD School Resource Officer Handbook. Please prepare to vote. Oh, please, Student Board Member Domenia, please.
Thank you. I'll be voting in favor of the motion for the sake of the legal compliance. I understand that this was something that needed to be addressed. And I'm also glad that it was clarified about the access to student records and the MOU. I agree with Trustee Jones, everything she said that more needs to be done and the MOU and handbook can definitely be more robust to protect students' rights and ensure that all of the interactions go well. But I'm really glad to hear everything that all of you talked about today. It seems like we're really going in the right direction with all of the different training aspects that have been put in, the data reporting. And I'm really excited to see what happens in January with all of the reporting that we get and how we can continue to make improvements and work together. So based on that, I'll be voting yes for legal compliance, but I still think that more work needs to be done and we're really grateful to work with you and making sure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Student Board Member. Trustee Campbell, did you have your hand up that you want to say something or you were referring to the Student Board Member? Okay. Okay, so you don't have to yell at me, I was just asking if you were.
It is open for your votes. Trustee Zhang and Prasad, I'm not recording your votes. Thank you so much. That motion passes with four ayes. Trustee Zhang, Prasad, Campbell and Sudi voting in favor and Trustee Jones voting nay.
Thank you, Chief Washington, Lieutenant Tang and Sergeant Tang.